All right, good evening and welcome to the January regular session of Board of Supervisors. As a reminder, there's a recording device we use, both video and audio. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start with any public comment for non-agenda items. All right, seeing none, we will move into the minutes of previous meetings, quite a few meetings over the last month or so. The first one was the Board of Supervisor session for December 19th, 2019. Do I have a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve December 19th regular session minutes as provided.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approved. The Board of Supervisor session, December 20th, 2019, do I have a motion to approve?
The whole, if I may, that's not ready yet. That was done by Jennifer Guy, and she will not have that ready until next week. That was the special meeting to discuss the Carlino East Brandywine agreements.
Okay, so table those till next month, our next meeting?
Yes.
All right, the December 30th, 2019 meeting, do I have a motion? It was the budget meeting, I believe?
Yeah, it was. I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting held on December 30th, 2019 to, as stated.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the January 6th reorg meeting, do I have a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve the January 6th reorganization meeting as written.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the December 4th Planning Commission meeting, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular session planning commission meeting held on Wednesday, December 4th as written.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Treasurer's report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My report for this evening is as follows. The balance of the general checking, the general fund checking account is $716,854.26. The traffic impact fee fund is $1,647,807.23. The open space referendum account is $2,508,211.95. The open space fee in lieu of fund funded through the contributions of developers is The balance of the capital projects fund is $603,745.63. Balance of the state fund is $179,573.52. I have made a few additions to this report, not typical of your monthly report, and I have done so because it is reporting season, and I have done all the reconciliations on all accounts. So I would like to mention a few additional balances. One, the general obligation bond series of 2017 sinking fund balance is $92.42. The general obligation bond series of 2012 sinking fund balance is $185.92. The balance in the non-uniformed pension plan is $1,538,294.88. The balance in the uniformed pension plan is $5,188,665.14. And in the independent 501(c)(3) East Brandywine Foundation Fund, which is the activities of the various fundraising committees of the township, is $91,287.28. I have a few activities to complete early this year that the Board should expect a little bit more information from me on. I need to revise all the signature cards on all the accounts to reflect new additions to the Board of Supervisors. I need to create two new accounts from scratch. That would be the solid waste fund and the fire services fund. Those are both from revenues that are earmarked, but inasmuch as there's nothing to deposit at this time, those expenditures, which we've occurred that are related to the solid waste and fire services, are being paid from the general fund. I need to close two unused escrow accounts, one known as the master escrow, which has a balance of .41, and an escrow account which has a balance of one penny. And lastly, DMB is transitioning to S&amp;T Bank. I need to install and train the staff on the new S&amp;T remote deposit technology in our office. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll take a moment to make sure the finances in order here. All right, motion to pay the bills?
I'll make a motion to make dispersments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The Staff Committee reports. Scott for the Township Manager's Report.
Thank you. Our Act 537 Plan project is continuing to move forward. I think we've gotten over the hump as far as the first three work projects are almost complete. One item of note that we learned Tuesday from our township, or I'm sorry, our Authority Engineer, was there were people that were still providing responses to our surveys into December of 2019. So we had over a 50% response rate, which is remarkable. The needs analysis phase, including random site visits to properties within each of the three zones, have been completed, the data analyzed, and a report is currently being finalized by Hydroterra Professionals. The data identified three potential problem areas in the township. A draft of the 537 Plan update is expected to be completed within the next two months. Once the draft has been completed, the Board of Supervisors will be provided with copies for their initial review and comment. The 537 Plan Committee will attend a future board meeting to discuss the updates and answer any of the Board's questions or concerns prior to submitting the update to the County Planning Commission for their Act 247 review. Once the County Planning Commission has returned their comment letter to the township, any suggested revisions will be made to the draft. And then the revised draft would be submitted to PADEP for their review and comment, which, based on our discussion Tuesday morning, would take five to six months for the department to complete. There's a $40,000 grant from the Commonwealth Financing Agency that is partially funding this work. The project was scheduled to be completed by June 20th, 2020, and we've submitted a letter to the Commonwealth requesting an extension of the deadline to June 20th, 2021. Given the length of time that DEP will take to review that, we couldn't make that deadline for this year. At the present time, the draft Act 537 Plan revision does not propose the need for public sewer to be extended to any of the potential problem areas identified during the needs analysis phase, the identified problem areas which are Cross Keys, Lucas Knoll, and the Tonbridge, and remarkably, the one section of the Cumberland Ridge development, which is relatively new, it's about 10 years old. Were identified as potential problem areas. We feel that we can deal with those areas through our sewage management program, which requires pumping the septic tank at least every three years, inspection of the tank after pumping is complete, and reports submitted to the County Health Department, which in turn provides information to the township, which Matt receives and catalogs. At our ordinance task force meeting last night, it was decided to ask the Board to approve the Sustainable Communities Assessment, or SCA, proposal from Brandywine Conservancy. The task force has been discussing this project as a component of an update to our comprehensive plan, which we want to kick off later this year. The task force agreed that the SCA report would provide solid guidance for the areas of the 2009 comprehensive plan on which to focus our work scope. The proposed cost for this assessment, expected to take, and I made a mistake, it's actually eight to 10 weeks, to complete is $8,000. This was considered as part of our 2020 budget. Task force members are recommending the township underwrite the full cost of the assessment in order to be able to complete the second round VPP grant application, which is due late in August of 2020. That will be for the comprehensive plan update. Having this assessment done sooner would permit the task force to prepare scope of work and the consultant RFP by April, select a consultant by June, prepare the VPP grant application in July and August, and submit the application by the late August deadline. They haven't provided that yet, but I believe it's August 30th. The second round award notification would occur late in the fourth quarter, usually it's late October, early November of 2020, which would make the comp plan update funded for in calendar year 2021. And in your packet behind my report, David Sweet provided more or less an outline of the work project, as was discussed last night in our task force meeting. And I know Mr. Buck Salos here, and I'm sure he would, he was the one that attended the original presentation of this program and brought it to the task force. And again, we think that it would be a good foundation for the comp plan update. So basically, I'm asking if the Board will support that request, request on behalf of the task force.
In my understanding, the, as far as the budget line items for this, this proposed 8,000 cost fits into the zoning hearing board line item, and it was, this was a projected cost, or an anticipated cost during the 2020 budget preparation. So this is a, said differently, this is a budgeted item or an anticipated item in this, in this fiscal year.
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Do you want, do you want me to make a motion?
Well, I didn't know if you, if you had any comments on it or anything?
No, I don't have any comments.
Make a motion. All right. Make a motion that the Board of Supervisors underwrite the full cost of the assessment for $8,000 to assist the task force, ordinance task force commission in their Sustainable Communities Assessment proposal.
I'll second.
And then, actually, I'm not sure if this should be before or after the vote, but any public comment on this, or any public on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, take a vote then. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Assistant Manager Luke.
Yeah, earlier this evening with my interim treasurer hat on, I mentioned that it is reporting season. So the first item on my report this evening is actually a list of reports that were due in the next, in the coming weeks before we have another regular session of the Board of Supervisors. I'm pleased to announce that Scott has completed the municipal tax information form and the report of elected and appointed officials form, the second of which is necessary to receive state liquid fuels funds. The other report that must be completed before state liquid fuels funds arrive is MS 965, which is due on January 31st, and I will be completing that form. We use a consultant LDM Accounting to prepare the 1099s that are due to the recipients of township funds on January 31st. In a slightly different hat, I am, have a recycle performance report due to the Chester County Solid Waste Society by February 21st. You should also expect in the coming weeks to receive your statements of financial interest, which are due back in May, so. And as you, just, I guess as an FYI, we expect a visit from AmTrust, which is our insurer for workers' compensation, who does an audit of our payroll figures. And also, our appointed auditor, BBD LLC prepares the municipal annual audit and financial report for us, which is due April 1st. Secondly, this evening, I'd like to briefly touch on the transition in the solid waste hauler. Staff have been experiencing higher than anticipated volume of calls and emails pertaining to the transition from Republic Services to A.J. Blazinski for curbside solid waste collection. There've been a host of concerns raised, ranging from missed stops to questions about the collection time of day. I'm pleased to announce that this volume has decreased each week since the first collection, and I'm confident that reliability will increase as the new haulers become more familiar with our community, its roads and layout. That said, I'd like to take a moment to thank the public for their patience during this transition and express my gratitude to Noran, Lisa, and Lisa for their efforts to ensure that every citizen concerned has been forwarded to the waste hauler for action. Thank you.
Thank you. Building Inspector's report.
Okay, for the month of December 2019, there were a total of 29 building permits and one zoning permit issued. Eight use and occupancy permits were issued, a total of 75 inspections completed, total fees collected for December 2019, $28,693. And for the year, a total of 306 building permits were issued, 26 zoning permits issued, 212 use and occupancy permits were issued, total of 1,633 inspections were completed. Of those, there were 103 failed inspections. Total fees collected by the Building Department, $241,142.47. Those reports are respectively submitted by Noran King, Building and Code Secretary.
All right, thank, thank you. Roadmaster.
Thank you. I'd like to start my report with a couple of, I'll call it accomplishments by the Road Department in 2019. We chipped at 291 locations and collected $2,300 in fees. We collected 227 and a half tons of leaves, and our road construction contract projects were completed around $100,000 under budget. We sold our 98 GMC, the 29,000 GVW dump truck, for $7,500 to Newland Township. Installed a cross pipe and end walls on East Fisherville Road, and the project took the Road Department four days to complete. And materials costs and the tree removal was around $6,000. This project couldn't have been a success without the cooperation of the residents of East Fisherville Road. The Township Road Department won first place in the Pennsylvania and the National Build a Better Mouschap Competition. Derek Kloss presented the spreader rack, which is what we won the competition for, at PennDOT's Innovation Day in Harrisburg in November. And we received a DEP Going Greener Grant for $246,021 for the installation of subsurface basins and reconstruction of swales in the Culbertson Run development. And we also removed 75 trees along Hawthorne Drive in preparation of the stormwater work. Excuse me. Recently, a contractor completed a trail located between the Community Park and Ferndale Lane cul-de-sac in the Hopewell Development. The Road Department installed a three-rail, split-rail fence parallel to the trail. The fence is 500 feet long, and it took, took us six hours to install. The estimated labor was around $1,440. And I'd received an installation estimate from a contractor of around $4,000 to install the fence, so the, there was a savings of about $2,500 using Road Department forces. My last item is on January 8th, I walked Culbertson Run Stream along with Beth from Cedarville and Ben of Land Studies. We walked from the Triple Span Bridge, which enters the Hideaway Development, which crosses Culbertson Run, the stream, up to North Cuthbertsville Road. The Culbertson Run Stream in the 1800s and early 1900s had many dams. These dams had many uses, as a sawmill, gristmill, and also used for ice production. Due to the extensive farming and lack of erosion control, these dams filled with soils which eroded from the fields, some within a couple of decades after their construction. In fact, there are times when the dams filled, the owner would build the dams higher, and then, and then they would fill in again with more sediment. These dams, although useful a century ago, have caused problems with our modern-day waterways. Once the dams were breached, the stream cut through the silt, causing the narrow streams with steep banks that we have now. The sediment along the streams is called legacy soils. Just a short section of stream along Low Washington Road has one dam, which is evident, and behind this dam is approximately eight feet of legacy soils. When the stream rises during a rain event, the stream banks erode, causing sediment in streams and downstream pollution. There are two streams in East Brandywine Township which are classified by DEP as impaired for sediment. The first is a tributary to Beaver Creek, which is a stream that runs along Bondsville Road up to the Weaver property. It also originates in Quail Hill at the ponds and in the Community Park. The second is a portion of Culbertson Run from just below the Three Span Bridge up into, excuse me, West Brandywine Township. East Brandywine is charged by DEP to remove a certain portion of sediment from these two streams. This portion of Culbertson Run is included in our pollution reduction plan as required. We are in the preliminary study portion of the plan to restore the stream. There will be more information as the study continues. And I'd also like to thank the HOA Board at the Hideaway Farms and Maggie Trio. She's a property manager for Hideaway Farms for granting us permission to access their property. It was a very educational walk up the stream, even though it was blowing a little bit of snow and chilly out.
All right, thank you. Take us to the police, Chief Kosse.
Good evening. First, inadvertently, it appears that you may not have the report tonight in the packet, so it's very quick. I can forward this to you by email or something if you want to say it. Monthly report for December 2019, the Police Department recorded 2,041 incidents. We completed 199 investigations. There were three criminal arrests, zero summary arrests, two warrant arrests, there were no juvenile petitions. Officers investigated 10 traffic accidents, there were 50 traffic citations issued, 93 traffic warnings issued, and 8,780 miles patrol were completed by patrol. And on this report, you would have had a copy of the monthly calls for service and the officer's activity report.
Thank you. East Brandywine Fire Company Deputy Chief Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Hader. December was quite a busy month for the fire company. We had 93 total incidents, 32 fire incidents, 61 medical. In East Brandywine Township, we had 18 fire calls, 21 medical calls. We used 71 gallons of fuel in East Brandywine Township. We had three training sessions with an average of 21 personnel in attendance. Some end-of-the-year data, East Brandywine Fire Company responded to 914 calls in 2019. 360 fire calls, 553 EMS calls. 138 fire calls were in East Brandywine Township. That's just a phenomenal number for East Brandywine Fire Company to respond to. It's the highest in its history, keeping in mind that it's a 100% volunteer, and our average personnel responding were close to 11 members per call. So there are really good things to accomplish. Last night, members of the Board and other townships attended our officers induction ceremony at Apple Cross Country Club where the fire chief, Vince D'Amico, appointed the officers for 2020. Also, today, in conjunction with the Police Department and the Parks and Recreation, we walked in towards Bondsville Road, Bondsville Road, Bondsville Mill Park, with the help of Mr. Buck Salos to identify some means of emergency egress in case we have an issue, and Luke was able to come down with us. So we're making some real good progress with pre-planning should an emergency happen down there on the trail.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we'll move to old business. At our last meeting, we tabled the appointment of the East Brandywine Township Municipal Authority for the five-year term.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mike Corbin to Township Municipal Authority for another five-year term.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. New business, Cedarville Engineering Proposals. Turn it over to probably both, what, Matt and Beth for the proposals?
Sure. I can, I can start with this. Before you were, four proposals. Generally, some of the proposals we would sign towards the end of the previous year so that we could keep the ball rolling on some of the projects, but this year we were unable to do so. I'd sent an email to the Board December 12th of last year, just sort of outlining all four proposals. The first one is our 2020 MPDS MS4 permit support. It's pretty much similar to last year, and the, the proposal is $51,473, which is less than, less than last year. There's still some funds left over from, from 2019, which I think we'll be utilizing in, in this year. The second is the proposal for the Aspen Drive Stormwater Pipe Assessment. There's numerous corrugated metal pipes in Aspen Drive, which is the Marshall Creek Development, which are failing. About five years ago, we had one replaced. We've been going in and doing what repairs we can, but at some point, these, these pipes are going to need replaced, and we're looking to Cedarville to do an assessment on the corrugated metal pipes and also make a recommendation as to how to repair them. There's many, there's many ways you can either line, you can total replacement, but a lot of it depends on the condition of the pipe, so that's, that's the second proposal that we were looking at.
So that's the second proposal that we were looking at. The third proposal is, in order to reduce the number of PA1 calls, PA1 call has a, I call it a service, that you can map your township and only parse out certain parts of the township where you have either stormwater. We also have power for our traffic signals and sanitary sewer. You can parse those out, which eliminates the calls for, the PA1 calls for areas located out of there. Last year, I did about 900 tickets. And so, in the staff meeting, we did talk about this, and we're actually recommending to the board to table it at this time and possibly look at some value engineering or some other alternative. And then the last proposal is the Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Design. We've been working on this project since, I think, about 2016. And this is just a continuance of the project. Many things have changed. The design has changed over the past, probably a year or so, due to utilities, location of utilities, numerous items. So I think, I can let Beth talk a little bit more about that particular proposal. But I didn't know if you wanted to go from, start at the first one and work your way through, or...
Yeah, imagine so. Probably one at a time, go through the...
So the first one is the MPDS MS4 permit.
Did you just want me to give a brief summary of each proposal? Okay. Well, the first, MPDS 2020, this is our proposal for the scope of services for this year. We typically prepare a scope and budget around September, October of the preceding year in order for the township to appropriately budget for MS4 services. So we do this every year, and this is our, kind of our standard proposal. That includes elements that we have typically supported the township with for MS4 services in the past that are required by the MS4 permit, and maintaining some of the written programs, completing a public meeting presentation to keep the residents and the board apprised of the activities of the MS4 program, training for the staff, which we provided a cost-benefit because we grouped together multiple municipalities that we work with at the same time to do it. Outfall field screening and post-constructions or murder BNP inspections. Just kind of an overall summary. And then the annual MS4 status report, which is due on September 30th of each year. And these activities would be completed on a timeline over the course of 2020. I can go over that in more detail if you want, but I don't know if you, I guess if you have any questions specifically about that one. Move on to the next.
Any question?
Okay.
Jason?
I don't believe so.
Should I move on to the next?
So the only question I have for this item is more probably internal up here, is just from a budgeting perspective. Matt, you identified this is in line item 436.31, where we have $75,000 allocated. So that's a $23,527 sort of favorable difference. Are there other items budgeted for this line item? Or is that just a, is that, was it sort of over-budgeted for this particular?
It was budgeted based on the previous year's.
Okay.
Beth had notified me that it would come unless I wasn't expecting the price difference to be at that point.
Okay, so as far as this line item, if you're projecting out for all of 2020, you're really expecting this line item just to sort of land at this proposed value of $51,473?
Correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? If you find out, Matt, that you have some of the post-construction stormwater BMPs aren't being properly maintained, has the township ever had to incur expenses for that? And if so, would that come out of the budgeted item? Or do you have somewhere else in the budget that that would?
I believe that comes out of that particular budgeted item.
So if there were items identified, it would be in this $23,000 gap between, ideally between this MS4 proposal and what we have budgeted for then?
Well, I think it's probably important to throw in here, we were talking about small projects, post-construction stormwater management. So this is swimming pools and decks. And our standard boilerplate operations and maintenance agreement calls for a five-year inspection period. And this particular mandate on the township as a MCM, a minimum control measure, wasn't implemented until 2014. So we're just now getting to the point where we're inspecting anything. So there is not a precedent for having discovered failing BMPs.
My question probably needs to be broader than that, because you own your storm sewer system in your public streets. If there's a failing storm sewer system, an old one, 20, 30 years ago, and that had to be repaired, that would not be coming from this $75,000 budgeted. Okay, that's why I just make sure, because more and more, you're seeing that municipalities are having to step in and make repairs to storm sewer systems within their public roads. And it's very important because of the MS4 program. So I just want to make sure that that was not, the $25,000 probably would not be enough if there would be a failure of some sort.
I thought that you meant the inspection of BMPs.
That's how I worded it, but I guess I meant like, any BMPs that you find to be failing, whether private ones or public ones, that you would then have to go in and do work on, would not come from this money. Okay.
Right.
Thanks.
Okay, so as far as this item here, then, I mean... Okay, we can do that. All right, so do we move on to item number two now?
Sure. Aspen Drive Pipe Assessment. I don't really have much else to add. I mean, that's pretty self-explanatory, what Matthew described. It's, we're really just going to go out and evaluate the condition of the pipes by putting a camera down there and using the township's existing GIS system to log the photos and then perform an evaluation and provide a report and recommendation to the township in terms of what the options, the potential options would be to address, you know, if there is a failing system there, which we're assuming because it's a corrugated metal pipe and based on the preliminary information that Matthew's provided, that there will be a need to either line or replace the pipe or propose some sort of solution along that storm sewer system. So that's...
And is that your firm that's doing the camera work for that?
Yeah, it's not, so it's a cost, it's not fully videoing the pipes, and that would cost a lot of money. It may be that we need to do that eventually. This is a preliminary nature, so we have, what we do is we can, we'd have a camera that has a flash on it that we can get a picture inside of the pipe that, it goes a few feet, three to four feet in of each end. So we could get a good feel for the condition on the pipe on the ends. We're not going to identify every single obstruction and failure that's in that pipe, you know? And that's excluded in the proposal, and it's in that line.
No, the reason I was asking is is something that we should be budgeting for ourselves to have a camera for the future, because it seems like if we're going to be responsible for doing this maintenance checks, it might be something we should look into.
We had a, we had a company, I think it's called Pipe Data, come out the end of last year and just do, I think we did five or six pipes in various locations throughout the township where there were problems. And for them to come out for a day is relatively inexpensive, and I imagine they could probably do Aspen Drive in a day or maybe two days. So for, I think for us to purchase any type of equipment like that probably wouldn't really make that much sense.
I have one other note relative to the incurring of long-term liabilities and the maintenance of stormwater. For the first time last year, we created a sub-account of our capital improvements fund that is, has the earmarked revenues for perpetual maintenance on stormwater. Most recently, we had an arrangement on the Ballinger 322 improvement. Those funds went there. And also, on the small projects, part of the fees that the applicants pay is to be reserved for future inspections, the five years that I mentioned previously. So it would be a breakdown of the capital fund of my report. It's about $12,000 in there. I guess we're just trying to keep things from going into the general fund and then disappearing into the general fund. This is a way to reserve for future obligations.
The following proposal with the PA1 Call GIS support, just a further description of this is updating the existing township mapping, GIS mapping, in order to import it into the PA1 Call member mapping system. And the idea here is, and I think Matthew addressed this, is that the number of one-call notifications that he has to respond to currently now is anytime there is a one-call anywhere in the township, he gets notified and has to address it. This would limit it to just where the township infrastructure is, once it's imported into the PA1 Call system, or actually, you can buffer your existing infrastructure too, just as a failsafe, you know? So it's only as good as the data that you put into it, you know? The stormwater mapping is in pretty good shape. The sanitary sewer mapping would need to be updated and added in some of the newer developments. And then also, the electric mapping of the traffic signals, which there aren't, I think there's very minimal traffic signal mapping required. So that's part of that. And then there's an ongoing maintenance fee that was provided in here on a time and expense basis in case there were updates to the system that needed to be, that needed to be addressed and that type of thing. So that's that one. And then the last one is the Culbertson Run Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvements. What ended up happening in terms of the design plan supplement, I think it was before you around this time last year, we had been in the process of obtaining permission or consent to enter agreements for temporary earth disturbance to private properties as part of this project. And six of the private property owners, we weren't successful in obtaining the consent to enter agreements. So this supplement is in order to revise the design in the areas of those six properties in order to avoid any temporary earth disturbance to their property. And so that's what that supplement is, as well as the construction administration due to relocating the facilities from the roadside swell into the roadbed itself and also the nature of this project, whereas in previous projects, I think Matthew would provide a lot of construction oversight, because it's a stormwater project underneath the roadway. We had proposed the additional construction administration supplement, which is also on a time and expense basis, once the project does go to construction. As Matthew mentioned, we obtained a Growing Greener Grant for the construction costs associated with this project. We're hoping to continue moving forward with this, and if authorized to proceed, would complete the, you know, complete the final design within, you know, as soon as possible and get this thing out to bid and then hopefully go to construction this summer. I guess that would be the earliest that we could do it at this point. I think we're all anxious. This one's been going on for a long time. So that's what I have, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
Do you have to use the grant by a certain timeframe?
I believe it is a two-year window with the option to extend, to apply for an extension. So there's the option to apply for extension, you know, obviously, the quicker you, the more progress you make on a Growing Greener Grant, the more favorable it looks to get another Growing Greener Grant. So that would be the idea for some of the other Pluton Reduction Plan projects that were out there.
The only other questions, and hopefully, you know, in my first month here, I'm not too much of a broken record. The first item, we identified the budget, you know, so as far as there's a $24,150 on the last proposal, $9,000, is this coming, is the thought that's coming out of capital budgets, coming out of the stormwater operating budgets? Where are these unbudgeted items? Just trying to tie out.
Where would you like to start, perhaps with Hawthorne?
So we can just go in order. So we identified the first one for the MS4, we already identified. The $9,000 proposal for the Aspen Drive Stormwater Pipe Assessment.
I'm going to rely heavily on Matt's recollection. Did you work that into your proposal in the general fund?
Yes, it should be under Aspen Drive.
Okay. With the capital reserve or the capital? Okay, that's what I was...
For the capital, okay.
Okay, yeah.
And then the last, what I'm really trying to get, are these budget items or are these unbudgeted, just trying to, as we...
And then Hawthorne Drive has a budget for, what's Hawthorne Drive?
It has $300,000.
Luke's looking at the budget right now, so, yeah.
Yeah, there's...
Right, okay, the 300 out of the 438.01. Okay.
Correct. And I am not seeing the Aspen.
That's under...
Is it general fund or?
No, under road projects.
Oh, that falls under the $425,000 that was budgeted for road projects?
Correct.
Okay.
And the majority of that may go to Aspen Drive. There's too many unknowns in there. We were hoping to complete the assessment at the end of last year so that we could know what we're budgeting for the complete project for 2020.
Okay.
That's going to be a big learning curve through, not a learning curve, but, you know, try and figure out what that project's actually going to cost.
All right. And Chris, were you good with the language embedded within?
I was. They revised the language per my comments. Thank you very much for doing that.
No problem.
Any public comments on this topic? No? All right. Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Cedarville Engineers' Proposals for a total of, for the 2020 PDS MS4 Permit Services, Support Services, Aspen Drive CMP Condition Assessment, the PA1 Call GIS Support, as well as the Culbertson Run Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvement Design for a total of $111,873.
Was the item number three, though, the PA1 call, I believe that we're going to table that, right? That was going to be pulled out from the proposal.
Okay. Then I'm going to have to change that.
Yeah.
I'll second.
I interrupted him to tell him that...
All right, I'm sorry. So that one's withdrawn.
Yeah, that was withdrawn. So we'll go ahead and prove, I'll make a motion to approve Cedarville's Engineers' Proposals for the three projects, 2020 PDS MS4 Permit Support Services, the Aspen Drive CMP Condition Use Assessment, as well as the Culbertson Run Hawthorne Drive Stormwater Improvement Design for a total of $84,623.
I'll still second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, the next item is mine, is the Board of Supervisors' Meeting Dates and Times. I wanted to throw out there some discussion and proposal to move the times for the standing work sessions. Currently, I believe they're at 8:00 a.m. And for a variety of reasons, thank you, Beth, for a variety of reasons, thought it would be ideal to move it to a more, you know, during, not during the nine to five, to address both, obviously, our schedules as well as to, you know... know, encourage and be open for public to attend for those topics. So.
I'm gonna throw that out there, get some thoughts on that.
So if you're thinking of going to a night meeting, my input would be to move this Board of Supervisors' regular session meeting to an hour earlier. Here you are, a standard meeting, and we're almost under an hour, and we're pretty much almost wrapped up. So that would be my.
So moving back to back, you mean, you're saying, or?
Yes.
Combined, we just have one meeting, we can do a special meeting if we need to?
Correct.
Okay.
So, is that good? So one meeting per month, we'll start at seven, rather than 7:30?
6:30.
6:30. Start at 6:30.
And then, if there's any business in between, we can advertise a special meeting.
Does staff have any issues with that?
I'll chime in first. Just, our, you know, our cash control policies require signatures of the board on all the checks, and so I, I think, you know, most business can be handled, one meeting a month, but I definitely need to see face-to-face members of the board on an every-two-weeks-at-least basis, in order to get signed checks. Scott, you, you, you about to chime in as well?
Yes, I was.
Please do.
I know Kristen had expressed her interest in an earlier meeting, I think you said 6:30, right?
I just think 7:30 is late, if you're working all day, and people, but that's, I'm here to serve at the Board's pleasure, so don't let my decision, I mean, I will be here whatever time you say your meeting.
I would like.
Not 10 o'clock.
Get early.
Yeah, they stay, yeah.
So you can go earlier. Well, I think that much earlier than that, I know there are some that.
Well, not only that, but it gives you guys a chance to eat, too, and.
No.
Well, you wanna just try it at 6:30 and see, see how that goes, and if we feel like we're knocking it out of the park, we can either A, move it forward to six, or B, move it.
Right, so is it, the work session is 6:30, you're saying, and then general?
So what are you gonna, can I ask, what are you gonna do different between calling it a work session at 6:30 and calling a regular meeting at 7:30?
Not sure.
Yeah, yeah, I think you just have one business meeting.
One meeting, and so we'll have it earlier.
Yeah.
And then if we need a special meeting, we can advertise two days, three days.
Well, so my only concern is, our agendas are gonna be fuller, clearly, for the month. So you could call it an extension of a work session and a regular, or you can call it just a regular, but just, I would caution that, you know, an hour would be, you know, early may not mean an hour out of here earlier. I think you will get a lot.
Well, I guess my original thought was, so the work session's scheduled for February 6th, and I know that's gonna have some agenda items on it. I guess the main, where I was originally going was, instead of that being 8:00 AM, can that be a more accessible time for folks, both community as well as ourselves as well, that's not gonna interfere with, you know, the standard workday?
And the only thing I think is, did we not commit to somebody for a work session, for an extension of something, for the sixth?
Yeah, NVH.
So I think we have to keep to the sixth work session.
For that one.
For that one.
Yeah, just because we made a commitment on that one. Other than that, I would say going forward, I don't see it being a problem.
All right, so then, so then going forward, our, I think we're saying is 6:30, and just anticipate longer meetings for that session, for that meeting.
Right. And I guess while we're on the same topic, we should, we should also discuss, since this is a public meeting, we were trying to come up with ways of communicating through staff and vendors, and I think we should be voting on that as well, and how we're gonna handle that, because that's gonna put you in a spot where possibly you would be, would be getting a report to Luke and Scott earlier than the meeting, so that questions from supervisors could be answered. And I think you need to account for that as well.
I'm not following.
I lost.
So for the supervisors' chain of command, you would be, we should probably vote on who's gonna be the go-between, between the vendors and the solicitor and staff.
Right, so I think as far as coordinating efforts, as far as, so for, specifically for like solicitor information requesting, for example?
For anything, so that we're not, you know, this is something that I think we've started a dialogue on, and how we were gonna start handling this, and we thought we could curb it and talk about it at a public meeting.
Yeah, I think, I think we were talking about that, that's when I directed that email yesterday to you and Kyle, rather than having, I think what we're trying to do is, instead of me asking Kristen to, to, instead of one board member asking a question, or to say, "Hey, can I see this document," or whatnot, and then all of a sudden, you know, someone else is trying to get something else, to kinda streamline it, where we talk amongst ourselves, and just have one request on everything we need, or the management staff, so it's not like, "Hey, Luke, can you have this?" Or "Scott, can you give, provide a copy of this?" Or "Can you provide additional information to that?" We'll kinda centralize it, and have one request that has multiple, you know, multiple requests, rather than everybody just kind of stepping on each other.
Right, so at the end of the day, as we're a new board here, it's our first month, just trying to find some rhythm and cohesion and organization in our style, so.
Yeah. I don't think we need to vote on, I think we need to just try to incorporate it.
Right.
But I think it's important that we set the ground rules now, so staff knows where their directions are coming from, so that our vendors know where their directions are coming from. Chief, you had a question also?
Yes, Luke, I'm looking for input on this. If we're gonna go to one meeting, we're gonna go on an earlier time, it's gonna extend the meeting out, you're gonna have more on the agenda, okay? You're also gonna be generating more documents, and you're gonna need more reports in. Should we discuss that we need to have everything to Lisa by maybe that prior Friday of that Thursday, or at least by Monday morning, or noon, and then, like, cut the agenda off, so she's not scrambling at the last minute to throw something on the agenda? Because that, it's gonna be a lot for her to take a whole month of stuff and get it ready.
Right, I mean, I think ideally, Friday, and I think how this month worked pretty well, Friday, so a draft agenda gets sent to us to look for, you kind of approve, add any additional thoughts. It gives till Monday to get the agenda publicly released, and then, a couple days to absorb it, and.
A week's notice for her to have everything?
Yeah, in essence, the Friday before.
When would you prefer our reports, like Matt and myself? Monday, is that right?
Yeah, and, right, in essence.
I mean, yeah, but we could get, we could get our stuff to you by Monday.
Okay. Well, I mean, the best we could do is try it. I mean, so for the month of February, we're still gonna have the work session, because we have that extension, we'll, you know, go for that, and then that'll roll us into, into March, where ideally we move to one, and we'll try it.
We'll have the 20th of February, then, a regular session.
Regular session February 20th, but then the March.
You want your February 20th to be as it's been advertised at 7:30?
March 19th.
And then, starting with March, March will be your first one, once a month, starting at 6:30.
6:30.
Because they'll have to run an ad for that.
Right. And to, to just clarify, as far as staff communications, vendors and whatnot, to Jason's point, too, that's not going to limit, or, you know, it's still email the board as a whole, so everyone's on the same page. The idea is just to consolidate the actual requests that are exiting the board at that point in time, and obviously, I would CC the whole board. Jim, sounds like you have something?
Yeah, I, I'll just weigh in as a member of the public. It seems to me that there's a benefit of having two scheduled meetings of the supervisors per month, that facilitates business of the community. I'll just throw that in there, and then I'll ask the question, if you need a special meeting, you have to advertise that, and there's costs associated with that as well. So if it turns out you need to have the flexibility of really having two meetings per month, should, you know, the cost of these special meetings be considered for the advertising?
Maybe try it, and just see, if it's too much for the staff, then we're about to go back to two, but we'll have to just do it at a time, maybe two night meetings, or maybe one at six, six o'clock.
And we do have one of our biggest elements winding down, which has alleviated a little bit of stuff, but obviously, we have other ones coming up, but one of the biggest ones is on its.
I think the overall, my original tenor thought was to, to simply expand access to the meetings, and that was the thought with the evenings, you know, so I'm hearing with the, with, you know, thoughts on the one versus two. We give it a shot in March, and then we adjust accordingly, if it's not working.
One of the other things, to sort of address one of the comments you made, a lot of times you'll have, if you have special hearings that you need to do, for example, for conditional use, or sometimes there's other hearings, there's an advertising cost anyway, that's not part of your regular meeting. You have to advertise a conditional use for two weeks out. If you're doing an ordinance, you have to advertise an ordinance, even if your meeting's already been advertised, you have to place an ad for that. So if we would see that you have another reason to meet, you could coordinate it, that it would be the same time you'd be advertising for one of those other meetings, so therefore, you're not adding additional cost.
What do you see as the best practices in the local municipalities around us?
I think, most have one meeting, most, well, I shouldn't say that. I think it's, I think it's all across the board. If they do have work sessions, they typically are more during the daytime meetings, and that they're not so much for the public to come, it's more truly for the board to coordinate with their own staff, and to be prepped on things that then will be voted on at the regular meeting. So for example, Upper Euclid, they meet the second Tuesday of the month in a work session at 4:00 PM. Public can come, but public really doesn't make any comments, they don't really, they're not asking necessarily for public input on things, it's more just staff and consultants getting the board up to speed on things that they're gonna then have on their public agenda for the following week. West Ocean historically always had two meetings, and they had a meeting during the daytime, and people started to complain that they couldn't get to it, because it was during the workday, so they got rid of it, and they have one, and it's been working fine.
How long is theirs?
It depends. They start at seven, sometimes they're done by 8:30, sometimes they go till 11:00. It really, like, when Snoko was going on, we were there till 11 o'clock. If there's contentious hearings, contentious ordinances, they're gonna go late, it really just depends. It's totally at the Board's pleasure, in terms of, do you wanna be here one night, and have it be a longer meeting, or do you wanna break it up into two?
You shut down the public comment, three minutes, we won't have this problem.
Mr. Rader, down here in the corner. Just for the fire department's knowledge, is your guys envision like you're gonna have a work session for an hour or so, take a break in between, and then open up for a public meetings? Just so I know, if I'm not the one here, what time I tell the people to be here to present? Because you were saying that you're gonna combine the work session and the public meeting. So are you guys envisioning, hey, a work session from 6:30 to 7:30, and then the meeting like we have now?
Well, here's the thing.
With a break in between, or you?
His agenda can be, as he sees fit, so if you wanted to, you could do, you know, whatever upfront, and then go to the reports at the end of the, you know, at the end of the night, too. So he could put you guys off until 7:30.
I just wonder what you guys are visioning, like, are you anticipating that, or? I understand one meeting, but.
Right, right, you, right, you don't be here four hours for your five-minute report.
Sitting in the corner.
All right.
The only reason that the work session was named that was simply to differentiate it from the general public meeting in the evening. It's still a public meeting, it's not, that's the only reason I did that years ago, and it really started in, I think it was 1999, when we started to get more development activity. And there was no way we were gonna be able to continue with just one monthly meeting.
Right, right.
But, as was said by Kyle, Apple Cross is winding down. The other developments aren't nearly as intense as Apple Cross was.
Right.
So.
Okay.
I don't even know how you make a motion for that one. I don't even think you need a motion.
Right, what's the logistics here?
Well, I do think you need a motion, if you're gonna change your meeting times.
I'll make a motion that will continue with the morning work session February 6th, as originally scheduled, followed by the existing regular session February 20th, as we always have, with the understanding that the first night meeting in March will be March 19th, starting at 6:30 PM. We will be advertising that for the, for any residents who aren't here, to see if they'd like to join us, and we'll kind of fine-tune it as it goes, and Joe will kind of keep you in the loop.
Thank you so much.
See what you guys prefer, and we'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Can I second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Luke.
Sorry, technical glitch there, I'm always a little slower. I gotta point the camera at me. There we go.
You don't have a preset?
I overwrote the, I overwrote the preset accidentally moments ago. So this is a pretty simple matter, I've got a quote for the Board's consideration for the purchase of a mobile device, and for the monthly cellular service for members of the Board. I guess there's two items of discussion. I guess first, if I could put Kristen on the spot, this doesn't, this doesn't qualify as compensation in any way. And then the second is, is if this, if the Board would like to authorize its members to purchase. And then the third is, who's interested in getting a phone?
Pardon me?
So I'll throw this out there, that was the first question I had, was just understanding with, with all the right-to-know and documents and records, so I was questioning that. But I've since sort of withdrawn that for myself, you know, I don't think it's necessary, that cost. So I don't know if it's necessarily an active question at this point, from folks.
I'm not interested.
Any interest? So I appreciate the efforts on that, but that could be withdrawn.
All right. I am still working to obtain quotes on tablets to go digital at the front podium.
That would be nice to, not print this out every time.
Right.
Trying to go, to not have to do this every time, and waste paper and resources to have, so we're looking into having iPads up here, and just basically, something simple as accessing your email account, to have all the agenda items, and be able to go through it that way, so we don't have to spend so much money on paper and.
The idea we originally had talked about was doing it across the board, having for, you know, seven or eight, for planning commission, that could stay here, and, you know, so hopefully this will morph into something better.
A little more green.
So, that'll save a lot of time.
They release the time, yeah, a lot of time.
Preparation, so.
All right, Luke, the, the last item here, the new hire for Township Treasurer.
Yeah, I'm happy to chime in here, it's not actually on the agenda this evening at my request. I appreciate that members of the Board have identified that I am drowning with the treasurer's hat on. So just by way of background, the budget adopted by the Board of Supervisors in December anticipated the hire of someone, additional hire, in the Township Administration side, to have function of a finance, or a second-class Township Code description of treasurer in the second quarter of 2020. I understand that the reason that's on the agenda tonight is there's a discussion or a consideration of the Board to accelerate the timeline to hire someone to assist with financial matters. The packet consists of two things. There is a proposal from Lafayette College, and in particular, a gentleman, David Waglum, who is a consultant. His proposal would be to meet with the Board of Supervisors, and help the Board and staff develop the job description. This is a new hire, a new position, there's no incumbent. They would advertise the position, and help the Board review the resumes, and I should also mention that there would be some element of the work that is determining a compensation package, depending on the job description, that the. that is determining a compensation package depending on the job description that the, 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 that, that the board develops. The other element in your packet is actually a, a set of salary surveys that were produced by the Chester County Managers Consortium, and, and it shows kind of four generic job descriptions, that of accountant, fixed assets accountant, finance director slash treasurer, and a utility billing clerk, more of an accounts receivable, accounts payable role. And, and what you see on this table are what other municipalities in Chester County are paying for individuals that most closely match those four generic job descriptions. So I guess the, the question before the board this evening is, one, should we accelerate the timeline? Two, should we develop this job description and compensation package in-house? Or should we take up the, the Manor Center's offer to use their services at ninety-five dollars an hour to do the same?
Well, I guess first is, are we accelerating? I think that's based on the recommendation of the staff.
Yeah, I think, I think, you know, in the last two weeks of observation, just seeing what's out there, you know, the, the position is budgeted for Q two. I think if you're going to have a Q two start date, which is what we're budgeted for, the design and, you know, initiating the design and, and the recruitment should begin relatively soon. You know, April first will be here pretty quick. So I, I do think, you know, we should start to initiate the process.
I, I think that's important. Kyle, what do you think?
Are we looking for the difference between right now Lafayette or Mr. Woglum's?
Or just the, just the need, I guess, to accelerate.
I thought they were separate.
He's the.
He's the, he's the individual within.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, so I, so the two items basically is, should we start this process now, or wait? And then ultimately, should we be designing, going through the recruitment process, job description, compensation design, recruitment internally or externally?
I think obviously we're suffering with internal capabilities right now because of the workload, so I, I think this is the way to go for, to answer that question. And for the second question, I would leave that up to staff because they know what they need more than we do sooner rather than later, or if it can be on hold.
Does, does, does his services, like he comes in interviews with the staff and, and, and develops what, basically a, kind of like a package based off of what your needs are? And he determines like the, you know what I mean, or is he, is it just generic?
We, we could design his scope of services, you know, it's not, it's flexible. My recommendation would be that the, the deliverable is a job description based on interviews with staff and the board. So, so for example, you know, if, if the board desires a, a government finance officer's award-winning budget presentation, which honestly, I don't know if that's what the board wants, but if, if you would like to have an award-winning budget presentation like our colleagues in Upper Euclid, you need a finance director. If you would like to just free up Luke's time in data entry, you might be just looking at an accounts receivable and an accounts payable clerk. And, and I think that, that there's some use in having an external third party work through these issues and design the, the job description, and then assign an appropriate compensation package based on the consultant's familiarity with what the market would yield. And then I would actually, I, I would, I would actually cut ties there. I think we could handle the advertising and reviewing of applications and interviews internally. That, that would be my recommendation.
Three thousand dollars to have them, to not exceed the three thousand dollars, propose to come and identify and come up with a job description and based off of the need of the staff and do interviewing.
That would be my, yeah, exactly.
I'll make a motion to accept Lafayette Minor Center's proposal to, at a rate of ninety-five dollars an hour, to assist the township in defining the need of our finance position and do the, to be able to get it set up so we can take it from there.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your consideration, and I, I, I don't know how to say, I appreciate the observation that I'm drowning, but.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, so that leads us to subdivision zoning and applications, assuming none? All right, and none ordinances, resolutions, consideration? Any public comment on agenda items? For our one soul left. All right, and for notices, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session on January fourteenth at seven AM to discuss litigation matters, and I believe we will hold one immediately following here for, for the same. And that, motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.